Those were nice. All right, this is five. Dan, you set? All right, folks, let's get started. I'll, uh, call the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, January ninth, twenty twenty-three to order. Candy, if you can do a roll call, please.
Bastian?
Here.
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Here.
Campton?
We'll do approval of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Village Board meeting minutes. If we can get a motion in a second, we'll get it on the table. Carleen and Mike, all right, any discussion from anybody? All right, see none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, thank you. Public appearances, uh, public comment, uh, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Anybody here? Not seen none, okay. We'll go to five, which is approval of vouchers. An amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents, and we'll, let's get a motion in a second. I saw Phil and Amanda, all right. Any questions for staff, from anybody, on vouchers? Mike's got something?
Yeah, just, I don't know if this, yeah, just to, um, number seventy-two fifty, all powder coating issue, what's? For thirteen eighty?
That's for Stafford Rosenbaum. That's, we're just working with All Color on, um, uh, we had some, some discharges from their wastewater system, and, uh, we're working with them on their cleaning chemicals and how we're gonna change that, so it doesn't affect our wastewater plant as much, so.
Oh, okay, thank you. And number eighty-five sixty-three, court tips, annual support.
That's Titan Public Safety Solutions, you know what that is?
That's a municipal court, expenditure.
Yeah, I forget what tip stands for.
Is that driving? Or is it juvenile?
I think it's juvenile.
Juvenile?
Okay.
Oh.
All right, that it, Mike?
Eighty-five.
Good, anybody else? On the board, okay, seen no other comments. Candy, if you wanna take a voice vote on this, please?
Yes. As I just put something in my mouth. Jacobson?
Yes.
Bastian?
Yes.
Van Campton?
Yes.
Bilo?
Yes.
Wunsch?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Glish?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Tips is the municipal court software?
Software, yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you.
It's the municipal court software, so it's the annual support for the software they use.
Excuse me for interrupting.
That's okay, no, good, thanks for the clarification. All right, we'll go to six, which is the consent agenda. We have A through K, and I learned something today. Martin told me that if, if, if somebody just has a question, it can still stay on the consent agenda, if it's just a question, so. Um, so we got A through K, if somebody's willing to make a motion, I see Carleen in a second, and Jenna, okay? Any discussion, any questions, anybody? Okay? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, okay? All right, seven is report of committees, uh, items are for discussion, possible action. Seven A is library board minutes for November ninth, that was in our packet. Um, we can go to eight, which is unfinished business, items are, again, for discussion, possible action. Eight A, professional service agreement for senior center and civic campus planning with Tri-North Builders Incorporated. Staff recommendation is to approve as presented. Elise, is this, do you wanna say anything, or?
Um, we've been working with Tri-North over the last couple, uh, weeks, which turned into months, just back and forth with a couple different templates, and ultimately decided to go with a pretty simple professional services agreement, just outlining those three, um, elements of the scope, the space needs analysis, site, kind of due diligence, site suitability analysis, and then community engagement, so. Um, we've reviewed this with Matt, gone back and forth with him a couple times, and then, assuming this is approved, we'll get with them this week, just to coordinate kind of a kickoff meeting and get this process underway.
Okay. All right, do we wanna make a motion in a second? Let's get it on the table. Mike, Mike's got, and Amanda, all right. Mike, you got a question? Okay. All right, yeah, Amanda's got a question.
Well, it's not a question so much, I, I noticed, like, three typos in the contract that, like, probably should fix, just 'cause I had to reread things a couple times, it wasn't real clear, so.
I'll play Matt.
Do you want me to, like, say them now, or we are approving in a corrected version, or?
Let's see them, yeah, if they're not, if it's not clear, then yeah, we should, let's, let's fix them.
Well, what, one is page two, uh, under three B. Um, there you have. The first sentence, uh, "Provide the village an itemized statement each moth." I figured that's month, but.
A moth a month, that's the moth.
Just, to be clear.
You can add it on the screen, man?
Uh, the other, the.
Well, yeah, we'll just.
I'll do that.
Or I can just do this and, and. Candy will make the changes, we'll just make it part of the motion.
Okay. All right, Amanda?
Uh, the other one's at the bottom of page four, and this is, like, two in the same sentence, so I just kinda had to figure it out, but, um, the first sentence, "Either party may terminate this agreement at any time." I think that's supposed to be with or without cause by delivering to the other party.
Yep.
I do this for a living, sorry.
Yeah. Anything else, Amanda, was?
Nope, that was it.
Jenna, did I see your hand up?
Oh, none.
No, okay, well, Carleen's got one.
I just wanna make a comment that I'm glad that we're undertaking this now, before decisions are made about what to do. Yeah, I think we've learned some, some big lessons, and it's a good thing.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we got a motion in a second on the table, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, all right, we'll go to B, uh, eight B is contract for legal services. Ruder, Whittish, and Evans, who provide municipal prosecution services. Staff, again, is recommending a motion to approve as presented. Let's do the motion, I should do the motion first and second, then we can discuss. Try, somebody up, do that, uh, Jenna, and then Derek, all right, all right, discussion, Mike, go ahead.
Is the, are the fees for Evans and the expense arrangements comparable to what we currently have?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? All right, now you got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, okay? And then we'll go to eight C, um, amended and restated development agreement with, uh, Bodie, the Bodie Partnership. And Matt, I'm assuming you're gonna talk about all three of these, do you wanna, we need to.
Sure.
Vote on each separate one, but do you wanna do one presentation, or do you wanna do them all?
I can do it all, I can at least describe the situation.
Okay.
At, as part of one discussion, and then you can take them one at a time.
Okay.
All right, um, so, as you may recall, the board did previously approve an agreement with JAD Development, Jamie Bush, um, relating to, um, some TIF support for, uh, the project that he'd like to undertake on the lot adjacent to headquarters, uh, we call it the Bike and Brew, or Bodie Howe Brewing.
Bodie Howe?
Bodie Howe?
Yeah.
Um, and, um, so the board, in fact, already approved essentially this agreement, but we're, we're back tonight for a couple of reasons. One, um, there was a time period on, in the agreement within which, uh, Jamie was supposed to provide title work to us, he missed that, so the older agreement expired, because he didn't hit that deadline. Um, and then we also learned, as a result of the title work that was done, um, he learned that he had some things to do in order for him to be able to convey to the village the outlot that has the stormwater pond on it. That is something we're hoping to accomplish as part of this transaction, he's, he's going to fix that pond, do some work on it, and then convey the outlot to the village. Um, and he learned that as a result of the financing that he had in place, um, he, he has to do some things in terms of creating, like, a new LLC, so I think we have a new name now for the entity that we're dealing with, a new LLC name, separate legal entity from, from what we had before. Um, so, this new agreement is essentially the same agreement that you approved previously, but we've got the correct name in there, and I think we tweaked it a little bit to reflect that title work has now been provided. Um, so that's the agreement between the village and JAD.
Exceptions to, they're addressed.
Help me remember. Oh, yes, I remember now. Too much to remember. Um, so the title work, um, that we received, and the agreement says that he needs to convey this outlot to the village, um, free and clear of certain liens that are against the property, but when we saw the title work, we recognized that there are a good number of existing easements, for example, in place that affect this property. And I had some brief discussion with Jeff, and, or email communication with Jeff and Martin, to ask, you know, gee, do we, do we wanna take the time and spend the money to get our hands on all of those things and review them and understand what they provide for, or do we, are we willing to forego that step in the process and take title to this outlot without doing that? Um, and the conclusion was, well, ultimately it'll be up to you, but we decided not to spend the time and money doing that, because the, at first, for the following reasons. Um, we're getting this outlot at no cost to the village, the use of the outlot post-transfer to the village will be the same as the current use, which is just a stormwater pond. We have no plans to build anything on it or do anything with it, other than just leave it as it is with the stormwater pond.
Possible tracks.
Oh, and this possible bike thing that might happen in the future.
Home track.
Um, so, we're, it was kind of a calculated risk, you know, rather than spend the money to go through and do the due diligence that we would do if we were planning on, say, building a new facility on there, um, we thought, well, let's not do that. So, I wanted to make the board aware that, you know, there's just, there's some chance that there's some easement out there that might pop up down the road, and we'll find out, well, this easement is a problem for the stormwater pond, or for this bike thing that we might wanna do something with. Um, if you'd like, we can say, yep, no, let's, let's look at all that stuff and make sure we know what it all is before we proceed further, um, at some additional expense, I mean, there was probably, I don't know, ten or fifteen items in there. Um, among other things, one of the exceptions is anything that might be on the plat. And as Jeff and I have learned, there can be all kinds of things on plats that, you know, can raise questions. Uh, so, that's, I guess, let's stop there and just ask, are there any questions about either the agreement or the title associated with that outlot?
All right, Mike, yeah?
Yeah, I have a few. I agree with you, there's a ton of liens, uh, more than I've ever seen on a property. Um.
Well, the liens, in terms of mortgage, that will be released.
Yeah.
Those will have to go away.
And those make sense, so three of the four exceptions you had made absolute sense to me to get rid of, and it seems pretty straightforward. The fourth exception that you had, which I think was number four, says, "Any lien or right to a lien for services, labor, or material heretofore or hereafter furnished, imposed by law, and not shown by the public records." How would you ever clear that?
Through an affidavit, um, where he would sign as part of the closing saying, I haven't had any work done. This is a, that's kind of a typical, uh, a fairly common, that's a standard title exception, it's typically cleared through an affidavit by the seller at closing, saying, now here, he will have had work done, so we'll need to know that he paid the contractor who's doing the work, and we'll need, like, lien waivers to show us that, that he's paid that contractor. 'Cause we're saying that one has to be removed, right, exception number four, do you say?
Four, yes.
That one has to go.
That's in the title.
That one, I'm saying he needs to have that one cleared.
If anyone has a page number of where that is in the packet.
I'm trying to read it.
Yell it out.
Yeah, it's, it's further down. There's the title insurance piece. Um.
There we go.
On page one seventy, or one twenty-seven, page, or section B, three subsection A, it states, "The village is also willing to accept title to the outlot subject to real property taxes for 2023, not yet due and payable." What does that mean?
Well, we anticipate the conveyance of this property is gonna happen early in 2023. The property taxes for the entire year on this parcel in 2022, I call it the sun asterisk, it was like five bucks or something, like twenty-five bucks?
Yeah, I don't remember what it was.
It was a very small number. We won't, rather than try and go through the process of, um, calculating and prorating taxes for 2023, I just said, we'll take, we'll pay the tax on that. It's gonna be peanuts, like, twenty-five, well, do you remember about what they were? It was, it was like less than fifty bucks, though, right?
Sure.
Okay, so if, uh, if I read this correct, if the outlot doesn't transfer the entire ownership, the entire agreement's negated, correct?
Right, if he can't accomplish the conveyance of that outlot to the village in accordance with this agreement, he doesn't get the TIF support.
Okay. And lastly, um, on page one twenty-nine, section C, item one, subsection E, it states, "The district shall not be terminated until the district must be terminated by law," referring to, to District Four. Does that mean that even if we prepaid our obligations for the municipal, uh, revenue obligation to them, that we still have to hold the TID open?
No, I don't think so. I'd like to see that language, Martin.
Where were you again?
Page one twenty.
Uh, page one twenty-nine, section C, subsection one E.
Okay.
Um, the intent there is that, um, is to say that we won't terminate the district until he's been paid, or it must be terminated by law. I agree that the way it's written could be improved, and I'd be happy to do that, to tweak that, to make that more clear.
Yeah. It seems rather categorical, the way it's written.
Yeah, uh. Yes, the intent there is to make, is to say, we won't terminate the district until either you have been paid, or it must be terminated by law. And so, I'd be more than happy to make that, you know, if you wanna make, uh, if you wanna amend, if you want, including your motion, a suggestion that that, or requirement that be amended, that would be fine.
I would like to put that forward as a motion, that we have the ability to, to close this early if he's been paid off.
All right.
All right, so, so we don't have a motion in a second, we'll, let, that's, we can, we can discuss still, or we can get the motion on, let's take care of this.
I'll wait till we.
Yeah, let's take care of this either way, but why don't, why don't we get a motion in a second on, on the table, and then we can have more?
I'll move.
All right, Phil, and then Amanda, okay, so, Mike, we got your suggestions.
I would like to make a motion to amend that, to include, uh, um, the village is all, oh, how's this read? The, the district will not be terminated until the district must be terminated by law or the municipal revenue obligation has been paid in full.
Okay, you got a second? All right, Phil? All right, any, any other discussion from anybody on?
Are we voting on the amendment, or are we just, or are we just unanimously approving the amendment?
We're just doing.
I would do the amendment.
Did we have, okay?
We didn't have a, we didn't have a motion to approve.
Did we have a main motion?
No.
We did?
Yeah.
We did, no.
Yeah, we have Van Campton.
Yeah, we have.
Wunsch for the main motion, and then we have Wunsch and Van Campton for the amendment.
Right, so now we need to vote, well, but I have further discussion. Sorry.
Let's close out the amendment first.
Uh, okay.
All right, so let's vote on the amendment.
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, okay? All right, so now we're on the main, and Phil?
Questions from Matt again, on the easements. Um, what are the nature of these? Are they stormwater, are they utility, are they right of access? Do, do we know that much about them?
Yeah, let's pull it up. As I recall, there, it's, it, there are a mix of utility and stormwater easements. Anything that might be showing on the plat, which I had not reviewed, uh, let's see here.
You're, you're talking about these, right?
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, there's, there's a couple power easements through there.
Page one fifty-one.
Telephone company easement, general telephone company.
It's really items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Right. We have a water main through there, we have a stormwater management easement through there.
Okay, and, and I, I did read through those, but my, my concern is, is, you know, are any of these gonna come back and bite us, and obviously you've given that some thought, but, um, I guess what I'm saying is that if someone has an easement, we make major modifications to this land, and then they come along and say, one of these easements is enforced, and you're violating it, or we no longer have this, our access. Do you see where I'm coming from?
Well, that's the risk, and that's, that's why part of the calculation is, well, we're not making major changes to the land. We're really leaving it basically as it is today.
Okay.
No one has raised their hand and said, hey, what you're doing with this stormwater pond, or on this lot, is a problem.
Right.
So, the calculated risk is, it's not a problem, it won't be a problem. But can I guarantee it won't be a problem?
Right, right.
I, could I come through?
Go ahead, and I'm, I'm gonna get Jenna and then.
I just wanted to give a comment, the origin, I mean, the reason this all started, like, the, the, of the village taking over this, eh, this area and the pond, started with the fact that originally, it was intended that it would be under an HOA, that would be part of the whole, the whole, we call it Elliott Development over there. There's all those condos, those three-story apartment buildings, um, the headquarters site, the others, the Bodie Howe site, and all of that, that was never done, this, there were some things that happened, and we fixed some things, you know, back from that, um, the last couple years, but, uh, that was never done, and so, um, but it, for some reason, it was assigned to, uh, Jamie, you know, that, that parcel, when, when it went through a, I think there was a bankruptcy?
I believe so.
I think there was a bankruptcy, and for some reason or another, that whole parcel where the pond was, was assigned to the single lot. Um, it's really not fair to have one owner there be fully responsible for it, however, in order to straighten this all out, it made sense to, you know, turn it over to the village, it would just be a stormwater management pond, but like anything else, before we would accept it, we wanted it brought up to certain standards, 'cause there were some issues out there, you know, with construction and everything. So that's kind of where the, the impetus behind this, but we're not changing the use of it, we're not changing the original intent of it, um, it's just, I wanna say, it's kind of cleaning up something. Um, but as with anything that we try to do, right, Matt, it's never as simple as, as we would like.
All right, Jenna and then Carleen.
Um, just, so, we're not talking about changing it now, but we have talked about adding this pump track around it, and these, that's when these easements could potentially be an issue?
It could conceivably, um, it strikes me as unlikely, given what I'm seeing here, but of course, you know, until you actually look at them, you don't know for sure.
Yeah, Carleen?
I'm just wondering, because these folks, these different entities have easements, are, is there not some requirement on our part to contact them and say these things are happening?
No.
No?
No, we would just be acquiring the land, subject to whatever the rights they have under their easements, and.
And how old are these easements?
Well.
Probably the age of the, of that plat that was done out there, whenever that was developed.
Do you know when that plat was recorded, about thirty years ago?
Uh, well, let's see if it says here, um.
The oldest date I can find was two thousand and six on any of these things.
It would be around there, it'd be very close to that.
All right.
Derek, do you remember your dad coming home, talking about this at the dinner table? He didn't talk about this stuff when he came. That, that wasn't, that wasn't the thing he brought home for dinner, that discussion.
All right, any other discussion? So there is a motion in a second on the table to approve.
And this, just to clarify, the motion is to approve all three?
No, just, we're taking them separately, Amanda, yeah. So we're just doing, we're just doing C right now, okay? All right, so I don't see any other discussion, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, okay? All right, Matt, you wanna take us through?
So the other two documents, um, involve the lenders that, um, Jamie's dealing with here. Uh, one is an assignment to, yeah, collateral assignment of the development agreement, that's an assignment to one community bank of the development agreement, and the right to receive payments under the municipal revenue obligation. And so the, the reason this, what's happening with this is that, um, one community bank is providing a relatively small loan, um, corresponding in amount to the amount that the municipal revenue obligation is gonna provide in terms of dollars, and the collateral or security for repaying that loan is the municipal revenue obligation, so, um, in this document, Jamie, or JAD Bodie LLC, is assigning the, uh, development agreement and the right to receive the MRO and payments under the MRO to the bank, one community bank. Um, at least to make a note that when we issue this MRO, it will go to the bank, not to.
Oh, good, not to JAD.
JAD Bodie, and in fact, there's language in the document where he, Jamie waives any claim he has against the village for doing that, uh, for sending it to the bank and not to him. So that's the purpose of this collateral assignment, it is to, uh, assign the development agreement to one community bank. The other bank-related document is a subordination agreement, where essentially, so the main lender on his project is Oak Bank.
Oak Park Bank.
Mm-hmm.
Oak Bank.
Oak Bank.
And Oak Bank, eh, wants to have a first-position mortgage and to be, have priority over, um, one community bank, in, in getting paid. And so this is mainly an agreement among Oak Bank, one community bank, and Jamie, that makes it clear that Oak Bank has priority in terms of getting paid over anyone else. Um, the village is only being asked here to just acknowledge that this subordination agreement exists. Kind of irritating to me that we're being asked to do that, I don't really know why they need us to do that, but they are asking us to do that, and I reviewed it, and I don't really see a reason that we shouldn't. I don't see a downside to acknowledging this thing exists, it doesn't really impose any duty or obligation on us that I can see, um, that I'm concerned about, so that's the purpose of this one.
Okay. So, on that one, um, Phil, or do, should we?
I have a question first, or, well, we can get on the table.
Well, let's, let's, can we do D? Matt was talking about E, can we do, get finished D up, the collateral assignment that?
No, that's what I have my question. No, that's what I have my question about.
You have a question? But we can still get a motion in a second. We can get it on.
Yes, I'll move to approve.
Okay, second? All right, Mike? All right, Phil, what's?
Uh, Matt, you said it's so, uh, just, I wondered about this too, because it's so, as you said, it's so unusual for them to ask us to acknowledge something that we're not a party of.
Well, the assignment, um, yes, they, they're, but they, but they're also in effect with the collateral assignment. We are effectively acknowledging that we're going to send that municipal revenue obligation to the bank, and not to J A D. So, we're not a party to the, uh, and the other thing that's nice about that assignment, though, is that it requires J A D to expressly waive any claim he would have against the village. You have the bank say to the village, "Hey, we're exercising our rights under this assignment. Please send us the municipal revenue obligations, please send the payments to us." So it gives us some protection, which I like.
So, um, okay, I, I guess I'm comfortable with that. It just seems so unusual for us to be a party of that, and.
Yeah, let me.
It seems like as soon as they notify you that you need to sign something, that, to me, that's a huge red flag, saying, "What, what am I giving up?"
What am, what am I subject, yeah, and that's why I read it carefully, and that's why.
Yeah, and I'm sure you have.
Yeah, and I'll just mention something about, about this collateral assignment. With these pay-as-you-go TIP agreements, these municipal revenue obligations, sometimes what the developer will do is what they're, what it's doing here. He will, it's, he'll take it to the bank and monetize it, essentially. So instead of him waiting for the money, he will be, take it to the bank and say, "Please accept this as collateral, and make the loan to me now." And in order for that to work, the bank is essentially going to require the village to sign, to at least acknowledge that this assignment has been made, and consent to it.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good.
All right, anybody else on the collateral assignment? Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, let's finish off, but the subordination between One Community Bank and, and Oak, Oak Bank. We get a motion in a second. Mike and Derek? Any discussion on this? I think Matt said, just, not really sure why we're doing it, but they want us to acknowledge that. Yeah, yeah. Any, any discussion on this one? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Matt.
Could I just get clarification? Are, are you going to make that change in the agreement, or do you want me to?
I think you should.
I will pull it up and do it now.
And I know that we got.
All right, and we'll, we'll move on. We'll move on to F. Revisions to the Oregon Police Department Public Information Process Policy relating to press releases. Chief, I saw, we got it in our packet, the change you made. Do you need this? All right. Motion, Amanda? You, or you want, nation? Motion?
Yeah, well, I have, I'll make a motion, but I also have a question.
Derek, your second?
Yep.
Okay, all right, Amanda, go ahead.
So I just had a request, maybe, um, change of the wording, just a tiny one, um, because of the wording of, let me pull it up here. There we go, okay. Yeah, so it just says, it'll be forwarded to the village clerk for his/her record. In the spirit of trying to avoid pronouns like that, when it could be there, or whatever, can we say "for" the village record instead?
For the clerk's record.
Or for the clerk, yeah, well, yeah. I, I don't care what it is, just, so there's a way to just eliminate it, which makes it easier for future.
Put a period right after clerk. Yeah, for the rest of it.
There you go.
All right, so Amanda, you're mending, and Derek, are you okay?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Move on to G, which is Resolution twenty-three oh one, establishing the press release policy. Staff recommendation is to approve. Let's get a, want to get a motion in a second, we'll get it on, Derek, and then Carleen. So we got a motion in a second. Discussion, anybody? Seen none? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Nine, new business items offered discussion, possible action. Nine A is promotion of Nick, Jeff, tell me.
Arsenal.
Okay, to Public Works Crew Number Three, grade nine, um, and placement at step three of the employee compensation plan. We're going to motion in a second. You, you have a question?
Not to me.
Okay, yep, thank you. Jenna? Derek? Any questions? Any discussion? Jeff, do you want, do you need to say anything, or?
No, it's, it's laid out there in the memo and stuff.
Okay, yep, yep.
Just kind of a, getting them to where it probably should.
Yeah. Good for Nick.
He's taking a lot out of responsibility.
Yeah. All right. We got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Nine, nine B, future agenda items. This gives the board members the opportunity to place items. Uh, and new business on our future agenda item for discussion. Anybody have anything they would like to have on our future agenda? Not C. Okay. We'll get you next time. Okay, we'll go on to ten then. Report of Village Officers. Uh, A is Village Administrative Report, which was in the packet. Ten B is Director of Community Development Report, which was the twenty-twenty-two Housing Affordability Report, that was in our packet. Elise, I don't know if you, do, do you need a motion on that, Elise, or you want to just, is that for information?
No, I think it's just for information only, to share with the board. No major changes from last year, other than we're making progress on those zoning text amendments that were, uh, suggested in this plan, so you'll, we'll probably present that to the Planning Commission in, um, February, I hope, and then those to you guys later this winter.
All right. Yeah, Amanda's got a question? Or comment?
You're going to fix the page numbers first? I had a heart attack when I looked at the table of comments, and I saw a hundred and eighty-four pages, and I was like, "What?"
That was when we had quite a bit of, yeah. Yeah, no, I'll get that changed up on the website.
All right, good. Thank you. All right, let's go to ten C. Village Department Head Staff Consultant Comments?
I'm Jeff.
Jeff?
Jenny, you go.
Chief?
No.
Ethan and Jeff.
Today marks Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so I've sent out a nice message to my staff, and we posted a, a message on our Facebook.
Very good. Jeff?
All right, I was just going to give an update on two village halls. Well, tale of two village halls, exactly, the saga. Um, actually, I'll give an update first on, uh, this village hall, as we continue to, uh, go through as much duct tape and bailing wire as we can. Um, we're just kind of eking our way through these last couple of months. Uh, we did have an incident that was the Tuesday before, uh, Christmas, where we had, uh, smoke in the building, and ended up finding that the one and only steam boiler in the building had been running dry, um, due to failure of two parts on that, um, and essentially it melted itself. I've got pictures, if anyone wants to see it, it's pretty impressive. But, uh, we did, we're able to shut off the water and shut off the gas to that. Uh, but what that did was, during the coldest week of the year last year, uh, we actually had virtually no heat in the building. So we did some creative things, we bought some small space heaters, we turned these up as, as hot as we could, um, safely, and, and we're able to keep our, our building at a decent enough temperature for about a week and a half, till we were able to, uh, rent a temporary furnace for the next three months. You've probably seen it out back here, um, right, right back over here. It, we ran our gas line to it, um, Sarah Electric did the electrical for us, and that's what we're going to run off. We run two ducts, one into the main area up front here, and then one into the office area, and it's actually been working really well. Right? Right?
Yes.
Altogether, right?
Right, everybody, well, it's, it's actually been keeping things nice and warm, um, it, we're, we're still working on the regulating of it, but, um, it was a situation where, if we really, really got cold, and when we go into January, just, and February, um, we'd be having some hard times, but this, that, we'll be leasing that boiler for the next three months, until we can move into the new village hall. What our plan is, our, our plan is not to repair the boiler, that, or replace the boiler, that's a very expensive investment, and with unknown condition of where this building will be, and the more likelihood that even if it were reused, it would be stripped and, and redone, would just be done at that time. So once we move out of this building, we will be moving, uh, we will be, I, I, using the term mothballing the building. So we'll be draining the utility systems, um, uh, what is working, we'll make sure that it's still working, and, and look at what we might salvage, and what we might not salvage, and, um, and then just closing. Closing the building, it won't be used for any kind of use, or anything like that, so, um, and, and then after that, we will have, of course, many discussions on what the future of this building and site might be. But for now, that's, that's, uh, the main thing for this building. Progress on the new building, our new building, um, at one oh one Alpine is going really well. I've been trying to keep the staff up to speed with some photos, and I know those have kind of been sent out to the board at times, too, and, um, the painting is done out there, um, almost all the HVAC has been done, with the exception of, we're still waiting on the air handling unit upstairs. A lot of the walls are in, um, the paint, like I said, the painting's done, we're, we're waiting for the casework, um, so some of the built-in desks and, and kind of, I'll call it cabinetry, to come in, and then carpeting, um, a lot of the, well, all of the electrical and IT cabling has been done, um, and it's, it's really coming along nicely. It's kind of fun to start to see the color schemes come together, to see the lighting go in, and it's always nice, it was already a very, very dark area in there, and all of a sudden, we're using LED panels for the, the ceiling, and to start to see the light come in, and, and really start to open up that space. But, uh, we're shooting, we're hoping for, at or near April first completion. We will be very excited when that time comes around. What we'd like to do is be able to, hopefully, once we can get moved in and settled, have an open house, um, for the public, and so they can kind of get an idea, and of course, we'll have lots of pictures of where it was, and they can see where it is now. But, things are going really well. You know, there's always, there's always things that cost a lot more money as we go through them, um, and those are happening, but, uh, we're trying to keep that under control, and, um, but at the end of the day, we're also trying to make decisions that make sense from a financial standpoint, and a long-term use of the building standpoint. So, I welcome any questions on any of that.
Anybody?
I just have one more thing, just to, um, the boiler incident has also been reported to our insurance company as well, so.
Yes.
We'll see what that comes up with that as well.
Okay, yeah, Amanda?
Can I just say thank you to staff for working through the, the cold week and a half? It's not fun to work under those conditions, but we appreciate you, and, um, looking to save the village money, and, and doing the best you can with what you have. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other department head, staff, comments? Okay, seen none? D, Village Board Comments? I know Carleen has got an update.
Yeah, I just have a quick thing to share about the DEI training, just want folks to know where that is. Martin has sent emails to staff who, and community members who will be interviewed by the Nehemiah Training Staff to get a, a starting point for where training for village staff and board and such should begin. Members of the DEI Committee are prepared to be facilitators for Oregon Groups in the, uh, Black History for a New Day class that begins in February, and we are in the process of prioritizing, we have fifty free spaces in that, and we have more than fifty staff, and there, there is also the expectation that board members would, would, uh, be a part of that, so we're working on prioritizing just who among, uh, staff should be part of that to begin, that initial training. There will be subsequent trainings in other years, so, um, we don't think we can fit everybody in the first year, without paying an extra fee, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the board? Yeah, Phil?
I think we'd all like to congratulate Jenna for being sworn in as representative.
Amanda?
Yeah, just a quick update, the, um, Transportation Committee survey, um, where we are getting surveys in, we've gotten a few hundred online, and more in paper, uh, that's open until Friday, so if anybody's watching, please fill that out, you can do it online, uh, the link is on the village website. Thank you, Candy, for putting that up there, that's good. Uh, and also, there are paper copies available at the Senior Center, the Library, Village Hall, Firefly, and, uh, Kickback Cafe, just to have it around town. So if you want a paper copy, and that does not have to be mailed, you can fill it out, you can put it in the envelope there, and we can pick it up, or you can take it with you, fill it out at home, and then drop it in the water sewer payment drop box in the parking lot here. So, no charge.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Carleen thought of one other thing.
One more thing I needed to add. Uh, we did have one resignation from the, the DEI Committee, one of our students just couldn't manage it with what she was doing as a senior. Um, we do have one student on the DEI Committee, so that is a position that is open to anybody in the village who would like to be part of the committee. Uh, do not have to be a student, and that application is on the village website.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Any other? Okay, not seen any. Eleven announcements miscellaneous, eleven A upcoming meetings and events, that was in our packet. Uh, so we'll, we'll do, yeah, yeah.
Quick question. Uh, Rachel, did I see that there's a pancake breakfast coming up at the Senior Center before too long? That's not on here?
That is coming up on January twenty-ninth, so from seven in the morning till noon, it's this pancake breakfast and bake sale. The chefs will be the Oregon Brooklyn VFW, um, so, yeah, I was going to announce that